Okay, I want to welcome everybody this evening to the meeting and we can start for the call order and the moment of applause, salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it is one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I do want to welcome everybody.
Thanks, sorry.
Once again.
Just set it down there.
Oh, okay.
The bag is, you can just set it on that chair.
Yeah. Don't leave that, don't leave that backpack unattended, please.
That's mine, you can just set it down on that chair, thank you.
Don't open it, okay. All right, once again, welcome everybody to the Thursday, May 4th, meeting of the school board. We are going to open up first with any board member comments that maybe we may have this evening. Anybody have any board member comments this evening? Mr. Muha.
I don't know if I'm supposed to do this, but I'll do it anyway. I'd like to wish my son a happy birthday, today's his birthday. But I also have others, something else to say. I wanted to, last week, I do like track and field and last week, the Mars Invitational was held, which is a pretty big event. I was there for the middle school and schools from Altoona and outside the WPL were there. But the, for the high school, North Hills Luke Frank won in the pole vault and Amberly Valeriano won in the hundred meter hurdles, so I'd like to congratulate them and wish them good luck, the WPLs and state qualifying coming up. Good luck to all the North Hills athletes and that.
Great, thank you. Anybody else?
I guess I would just like to say that I went to the induction of our students for the Beatty.
Oh, yes.
Career Centers National Honor Society.
Nice.
And it was a great program. Dr. Manarino was there and it's just really, I think, very wonderful when you think that these students must abide by two schools' rules. That they have to, they have qualifications for Beatty, but they also have qualifications for North Hills. And it was, it was very nice and I'll use the names during the Beatty report.
That'd be great, thank you. Anybody else? Okay, thank you. We will now move on to the superintendent's report. Dr. Manarino.
Okay, this is the points of pride for the month of April. The Pittsburgh Business Times ranked North Hills School District as 13 out of 105 Western Pennsylvania schools. North Hills School District has jumped six spots in the region's listings in this year's honor roll. High Cliff 6th grade girls took part in RED, which is Respecting, Empowering, and Developing, a new leadership program created just for them by High Cliff teachers Maria Shevcek and Jill Zunick. This program sought to empower attendees as they prepare to enter middle school next year. As Arlene just said, we had five North Hills students who were inducted into the A.W. Beatty Career Centers chapter of the National Technical Honor Society. The NTHS is one of the most prestigious high school organizations in the country and it promotes recognition of career and technology education students who demonstrate scholastic achievement, skill development, leadership, honesty, responsibility, and good character. Westview Elementary School 6th graders held their annual Aztec Market. During the market, each student sold their own handmade wares and food inspired by their recent study of the Aztec culture during a unit focusing on early civilizations of the Americas. This year, we had three students who brought home top 10 honors at the Pennsylvania FBLA State Competition in Hershey. High school business teacher Kelly Caneth advised the students and a total of 15 North Hills high school students competed at the state event. 60 new members of the high school National Honor Society's chapter were inducted in April. The chapter now includes 189 members. The National Honor Society is also one of the most prestigious high school organizations in the country and it promotes recognition of students who excel in academics, character, leadership, and service. The class of 2009 graduate and Pitt biomedical engineering doctoral student Sarah Bass was featured on Adam Savage's Maker Tour. She showed how she is working to invent and build the next generation of assisted technologies. Congratulations, Sarah. 8th graders on Team Heinz used iPads from Project Connect to tackle the grade's expansive research project in a whole new way and added four volumes to a new Team Heinz Oral History iBook series. The iBooks are available for free download online. Students researched a historic event and then recorded an interview with an individual who experienced that event or whose life was directly impacted by that event. They integrated these personal stories into their larger research project. High school students took part in a career symposium that allowed them to extend their learning beyond our walls in a variety of engaging career-related activities. Along with hundreds of area students, 8th graders took part in our Holocaust Testimony and How It Relates to You, a virtual seminar with the Holocaust Center of Pittsburgh and the Anti-Defamation League. PSSA Yoga, that's interesting. 8th graders were centered and relaxed due to special pre-PSSA yoga sessions led by 8th grade English teacher Jennifer Kirsch. During the sessions, students learned some tension-relieving stretches and breathing exercises to help them keep their focus and do their very best on the PSSA exams. High school students in Amy Patzalivis's and Jill McCullough's Nutrition, Food, and Fitness class are learning that healthy eating can start in your own garden. Students created environmentally friendly pots from newspaper and planted seeds that are now, that they are now watching grow seedlings of green peppers, summer squash, and other delicious vegetables. This is the fourth year in a row that North Hills School District has been honored as one of the nation's best communities for music education, as noted by the NAMM Foundation. We are only one of 527 school districts across the country to be recognized with this honor. The Best Communities for Music Education designation is awarded to school districts that demonstrate exceptional efforts towards maintaining music education as a part of their school's core curriculum. Senior French horn player Emily Kopp was chosen to perform in the 2017 National Association for Music Education's All Eastern Honors Band during the National Organization's Eastern Division Convention in Atlantic City, New Jersey in April. She is one of only 150 students selected from 13 states along the United States Eastern Seaboard. This year, we had five students attend the PMEA All-State Conference in Erie where they joined with other talented musicians to form the state's best high school orchestra and band. Our high school's wind ensemble was chosen from student groups from 13 states to perform at this year's National Association for Music Education Convention in April, and they served as a model ensemble for all in attendance. Congratulations to senior Nick Smith. Nick is one of only six players in the entire state selected for the 2017 Pennsylvania All-State Basketball Team. We wish Nick the best of luck in his college career where he will play at Nova Southeastern Over two days at Sam's Club, North Hills baseball players collected an entire van of food items and $2,000 for the North Hills Backpack Initiative. Our Hilltop Heroes Club volunteered at the 2017 Superhero Run at North Park. The students raised $3,000 throughout the year to donate to the run's cause of CASA or Allegheny County, of Allegheny County, which supports victims of child abuse, and they volunteered on the race day to run the children's superhero zone. Ross Elementary kindergarten teacher Kathy Fitzgerald is the winner of the 2017 Be There Award from the United Way of Southwestern Pennsylvania. This award celebrates adults who go above and beyond to make a difference in the lives of children and youth in Allegheny County by making sure that they get what they need to thrive. Congratulations, Mrs. Fitzgerald. Our middle school teachers Larry Dorencamp and Joe Welsh have been selected to attend the Gilder Lerman Institute of American History Summer Teaching Seminar programs and the Elevating and Celebrating Effective Teaching and Teachers, which is ECEET2, and it's sponsored by the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation. This month, we will induct our national, or our distinguished alumni, so congratulations to our 2017 Distinguished Alumni Award winners, class of 1983 graduate Carolyn Green and class of 1977 graduate Dr. Jerry Yee. They will be honored during the high school's awards night on May 18. On Friday, don't miss the 45th Annual Arts Alive, which will be held from 5:00 to 9:00 at the North Hills High School. And mark your calendars, you're invited to come out to congratulate the class of 2017 on May 26th at 7:00 PM at Martorelli Stadium. Wish them well as they continue onto the next stage in their lives. And that is our points of pride, tradition, and excellence for the month of April.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Manarino. We don't, didn't have anybody sign up this evening for public comments on the agenda items, so we are going to move on to education and that would be Mrs. Bender.
Thank you, Mr. Wilgus. The first item on the education agenda is the student handbooks, the Alternative Education Middle School and High School Student Parent Handbooks for the 2017-2018 school year. Does anyone have any questions in relation to that?
Me.
Okay.
Ms. Reed.
I apologize, I didn't read this. So I'm just going to ask you, in the handbook under dress code, do we have in there that the children are not permitted to wear sandals? Open-toe sandals?
I do not believe so at the secondary level. I can't speak to the, I can't speak to the elementaries, but I believe, I do not believe we have that in the secondary student handbook.
Okay, do we still, do we still have a dress code like girls, they can't wear halters, certain?
We do have specifics in there regarding dress and appropriate attire with that. I'll have to look on the page to see which page number exactly it is, but there is dress. And if there is a violation of that, that is reported to, to the high school or middle school administration and they address it accordingly.
Okay, thank you. I always thought we had that in the dress code about no sandals.
Sandals. No, I know some places do, but I don't believe we have sandals.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? All right, number two, the affiliation agreements with various universities and colleges for the CHS courses to be offered in the 2017-2018 school year. Those colleges are Carlo University, the University of Pittsburgh, LaRoche College, Community College of Allegheny County, Seton Hill University, and Point Park University. Any questions in that regard?
I just have one, is, are there more than that that we have agreements with, or is that, is that the list? There are more, I thought there were more than that.
Yeah, this is the ones that.
Okay, these are just new, okay, great, sorry.
Number three, we have the EduPlanet 21 Annual Agreement, Agreement. And this is the online tool that the district will use for online professional development courses and for tracking our teachers' professional development requirements. The next one is the, a board approving the affiliation agreement for student teaching with California University of Pennsylvania. This agreement is updated every five years. I have a question in that regards and I didn't have a chance to ask it, but are we, I thought we had, thought that we weren't going to be taking as many student teachers presently as we used to. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, so this is just one of the schools that we have, have student teachers with?
On occasion, yes.
Okay, and, but we also used to get student teachers from Duquesne's and we still do.
Yep, we still do. As you see, this is a five-year agreement. This is a five-year agreement, so California proactively sent this out to us.
Okay.
Just so now we're, obviously they need to, you know, update their agreements as well, so they just did that, so we have it on the books. This also prompted me to send out other reminders of other post-secondary institutions that we may have student teaching placements for, to then make sure that we do have agreements with them in good standing when and if we accept one of their student teachers.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Van Anna.
Lou.
All right, I would, I move that items one through.
Hold off, Arlene, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
The teachers from California, are they primarily industrial arts people?
Not necessarily.
Because they, their, their curriculum down there is very strong in industrial arts. I thought maybe they were sending us because we're probably the best in the, at least in the western part of the state, so, okay.
Okay, sorry.
Is that it? Okay, I move that items one through four under education be added to the legislative meeting agenda for approval.
So moved.
I moved, I need a second.
You're seconding, Mrs. Reed.
Second.
Okay, thank you. We can move on to athletics and activities. Mr. Muha.
Okay, we have three items on this agenda. One is the all-sports season passes and this is a, a new thing Ms. Shuniman was looking at and you could buy a all-season pass to all sports online and the, you would have a virtual ticket on your phone that would be scanned at the games and, and the, I think it said approximate pricing is also listed on here for that. Item number two.
Oh, can I ask something?
Sure. I, I may not know all the details.
Well, I just, I have two things. First of all, I think this is a wonderful idea and the rationale behind it is excellent, that if people have the tickets, they'll go. My problem is I own a flip phone, so what will an individual such as archaic Mrs. Bender do?
You get to buy a ticket at the ticket booth.
Yeah.
But I couldn't get the whole year?
You can buy a pass, don't give me a pass.
I mean, I could buy a pass and then just have to carry my pass.
Yes, it's just an option.
Okay, that's all, thank you.
Get yourself a regular phone.
I was actually thinking of that, but I figured my son would probably be like, "Dad."
Well, I only have a flip phone.
I, I have questions in regard to this too. I was going to call Amy. My, my first question is football tickets. With, if you buy the pass, that doesn't entitle you, I would assume, to a reserved ticket?
No.
I would assume these are all general admission tickets that are being sold. The same with the Spring Musical or, they have to be reserved, the Spring Musical?
You can do it both ways. It can be like a Ticketmaster where you can go in and pick your seat like you would for the musical. You could buy your reserved seat on here as well.
But at a discounted price?
No, the all-season sports passes for you to just make one purchase one time and that gives you access to all the sports.
For all general admission?
Yes. If you want reserved seats, you have to go buy reserved seats. When you get to the musicals, the ticket system can, it has our auditorium in place, so you can select your seat and it'll sell you that ticket.
Okay. But it will sell you the ticket, right? That's not a part of the package?
No, that's two separate things.
That's two separate. And then I was, well, that's it, that's it, forget it, I'll.
I have a quick question, Kelly. Thank you. I was, I was curious as to whether or not we've ever investigated if we have the ability to do what we're paying somebody else to do? Create, I mean, print and create and manage the season pass ourselves with students and appropriate teacher and appropriate class, you know, maybe we have a learning experience as well as, but it, it may be more, more costly, I don't know.
I'm just throwing this out there, with the accounting, with tickets being accounted, Dave, would that become an issue? You know what I mean, like, all of our tickets are accounted for because there's an accounting system to them because they're, they're of financial value.
I'd have to look at the detail of it, to be honest with you.
That would be the only thing I would think of that would be in the way of something like that.
Yeah, it's a good question, just, but we have to do some research, see if it makes sense.
Yeah, I just thought, maybe.
That's true.
Maybe want to investigate whether or not it's a, it's a learning experience as well as something we could do.
Okay. Number two.
Hey, item number two is a field trip request. Did the board approve North Hills band and chorus attendance at Disney World's Performance Tour 2018, March 23rd through March 28th? Students may miss one or no days of school depending on performance and workshop times throughout the Disney Performing Arts. This trip is also over North Hills spring break dates.
Nice.
Number three is.
Comment, if I may?
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Want to shout, Ron?
I just wanted to bring, bring up the fact that I would like to take this opportunity to congratulate the band and the chorus, the students as well as the boosters, because I think they've done this the right way. It's done over a vacation, there's no cost to the district and congratulations, and I would hold them up as an example of what some other organizations ought to try to, to copy that so that we aren't taking off days of school and we aren't, it's a little interesting sometimes when different organizations take off school days and we're wondering why. So this is a good example of the way to do it correctly.
Yeah, we'll have to ask the students, if they're willing to vote on that, maybe.
I'm sure.
Go ahead, Jim.
Okay, item number three is that the board approve student-initiated club, the French National Honor Society.
Second.
Right, we're not done yet, sorry.
Any questions on that?
Okay, that's it.
Okay, being no further questions, I move that items one through three under athletics and activities be added to the legislative meeting agenda.
Second.
Thank you. Let's move on to Beatty. Mr. Nudi.
The Beatty budget is up for approval. This year, the Beatty budget, it will be $9,161,000. It's approximately $105,000 higher than last year. The, I'm going to find it here, the North Hills contribution is $1,138,028 and it appears to be acceptable to Mr. Hall.
It appears to be a fairly, I mean, a really minimal increase from.
Yes, it was.
So it's not, yeah, I think we're, it's basically almost a break even, okay.
So that was explained to me that that's calculated on some sort of rolling average of the, a number of kids that we have participating, so it's sort of a lagging indicator?
So what we'll have is it's a five-year rolling average of the number of North Hills students that are enrolled in Beatty, so, yeah, so it kind of fluctuates up and down.
So we can actually, depending on, in real time, we could be either paying more or less than.
Yes.
How many kids we have there, because it's based on, on an average. But what is, what is the trend been as far as the number of kids we're sending there?
We had a few low numbers that are going through, our numbers are going up again. And with the two new programs, their Vet Tech and their Sports Medicine Programs, the numbers are going up. Beatty has a whole group.
Right.
Now, we've just finished our scheduling process, so I don't know the exact numbers of North Hills students that were able to make their schedule fit for Beatty, but Beatty is up to 718 enrollments and they haven't been over 710 years, I think Eric said.
Right.
So their, Beatty is getting a lot more students and whenever that happens, then the costs shift also as a, as a group between the nine of us.
Right. And they're offering a lot more than they did five, seven years ago.
Yeah, oh, absolutely, yeah.
Yeah, so there is a time, because of that rolling average, that we're paying for this easily now, that we're paying for 100 seats because that's been our five-year average, but we're sending 80 students. But there's also been times where we're sending 80, paying for 100 seats, or paying for 80 seats and we're sending 100 students, so it, it works itself out.
But we are the largest district to send students there.
Shayler is.
Shayler, we were second?
I think we were second last year.
Yes.
Okay, all right.
I, oh, go ahead, Lou.
One other item, I'll get, the $105,000 increase is represented, represents about $300,000 that was in savings by closing the Kitty Tech function. Now, if it does reopen, it'll be on a pay-for-play basis. It'll be supporting itself financially.
I would just like to clarify, Lou, it didn't close. We're just not, we're, it's now.
We're not funding it.
Right, we're not going to fund it, it's just a special line.
It operates as its own business.
Right, right. And, and that hopefully the tuition was raised and they have to be self-supported is basically what that's all about. I would like to just say one thing here. I had asked Lori if she would please put the budget on for us to look at. Thank you, Lori, for doing that. And we, are we going to vote on this next week, right?
Yes, and then you'll all need to sign.
All right, because, because we have to sign the papers and so on.
We have a week to pick it apart.
Absolutely.
Okay, I move that item one, under the A.W. Beatty Career Center, be added to legislative meeting agenda.
Second.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Nudi. We can move on to personnel. Mr. Kelly.
Thank you, Mr. Wilgus. Under personnel, I'd like to move that items one through five be added to the legislative meeting agenda for approval.
Second.
Thank you. It appears we don't have anything under policy this evening, Mrs. Reed, I think.
There's nothing under nothing.
No extra pay for you.
Nope.
Okay, community and intergovernmental relations, and that would be Mr. Yeemans.
So we have, we mentioned last time the appointment of voting delegates for the PSBA Delegate Assembly Meeting in October. I don't know if we had volunteers at that time, but if, we have, we can fill up to three slots, I believe, three voting slots for the, for that conference, so.
Well, I, I was going to be Beatty's delegate.
Oh, okay.
And I said, because normally we go, more of us go here. Is anyone going?
Is that's in October? Yeah, I, my intention to go.
And so that's one.
I'm hoping to go. I think Dee's hoping to go.
Yeah, okay.
I mean, we'll have enough delegate, just a matter of who wants, I.
Do you want to be a voting delegate?
Well, I, I'm going to be for Beatty.
You're going to be for Beatty, right, okay.
So that's why, Lou?
Mm-hmm, I mean, Lou could be, if Kathy and Dee want to be voted, I'm fine with that, I mean, it's just.
Dee and I will do it.
Sure, okay.
Okay, so we have Lou, Dee, and Kathy?
Kathy, mm-hmm.
Okay, all right.
Okay.
All right.
Okay, so I would like a motion to add community and government, intergovernmental relations items to the legislative meeting agenda.
Second.
Thank you.
And I just have one, one more thing to add. In Dr. Manarino's report, he touched on our distinguished alumni for this year. Earlier this month, I had this, this very sad news to learn that one of our distinguished alumni awardees this year passed away very suddenly, Carolyn Green. Carolyn founded, co-founded the, the office that I currently work for at Pitt and I had nominated her, and this is a tragic loss for our community. I was really looking forward to her, her being able to come and spend time with our students. She was a very passionate advocate for, for women in STEM and particularly women in the biomedical field where she had such great success. At the time of her passing, she was the head of Strategic Investments for the, for the arm of Pfizer, the, the large pharmaceutical, pharmaceutical company, their arm that scours the market for startup biotech companies to invest in. It's remarkable to think that her career took that trajectory that started, you know, she started out her career as a, as a teacher here at, at North Hills, so to see the, the trajectory that her, her career took over 25 years was amazing and just, her mother still lives in the district, so I'd just like to send our, on behalf of the board, our heartfelt condolences to her mother and to the rest of her family and she'll be very sorely missed. She'll have a representative, a friend of hers who will represent her at the dinner on, on May 18th, so that will be nice, we can celebrate her life at that time. Thank you.
Amen, thank you, Michael.
And we made, so we can now move on to finance. Dr. Nolish.
Okay, thank you. On tonight, we have one action item and then we have some things to add to next week's agenda, so let's start first with the action item. This is the 2018 Proposed Final Budget, and I want to remind everybody that this, it's called the Proposed Final Budget because this is a preliminary budget that the state of Pennsylvania requires us to vote on at least 30 days before we pass the final budget. So our final budget is slated to be on our agenda for June 8th, so this is why we were asking folks to approve this proposed final budget so that we comply with the state regulation to have that in 30 days before. I do want to remind everybody, though, that between now and June 8th, there could be some revisions to this budget. We are still waiting for some information from the state. I think there may be another Public Budget Committee meeting coming up, so there may be some adjustments. So a vote to approve the preliminary budget tonight does not obligate a board member to vote for the final budget on June 8th. These are two separate votes, so when it comes to June 8th, each board member still has the right to vote yea or nay on the, the actual budget on June 8th regardless of how you vote tonight. So I know there's always a little bit of confusion when we talk about the final budget and the preliminary budget, so I just. and the preliminary budget, so I just wanted to take a minute and clarify that for everybody. So this is what we're asking for the vote on tonight in this proposed final, to submit to PDA. So with the attachment, we have revenues of seventy-seven eight ninety-six and seventy-seven million, and expenditures of seventy-nine. It's, has the, the use of the planned fund balance of roughly one point three million, and that is what has been budgeted over the years to cushion the impact of the really dramatic raises that we see in the pension fund. So this is in accordance with how we've been planned this out, and is still following that, and if you look at all the attachments that Mr. Hall has, has provided, he can explain that in more detail. The real estate increase tax associated with this budget is point-two mils, which is approximately one point one percent above the current rate, which is seventeen point eight mils. So, Mr. Hall, is there anything you would like to add for the folks to be aware of on the budget?
That's a pretty good summary of it, of course, I'm here for any questions.
What are the, what are the wild cards in the state budget?
Well, obviously, they can, they can do whatever they, they need to do there. Just reading an article that, that they're going to have the largest deficit since the, the two thousand eight recession this year, so they're, believe, well more than a billion dollars behind in revenue collections this year, so I'm not real sure what that's going to impact on how they're structuring next year's budget. The proposed budget so far fits fairly closely with what we have. However, they do not tell you how they're going to cut fifty million dollars out of the transportation subsidy, and they also are only proposing twenty-nine million dollars in the PlanCon line item, which typically is a three-hundred-million-dollar line item. So they're certainly not saying anything there about how they're actually going to fund the PlanCon obligation, which we have budgeted for seven hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars for, for us. I seriously doubt that we will know those details by June eighth. Might be, might be a little clearer about that, but I think, I think we're gonna need to go with our best guess at that point.
Okay.
I, I'll say with respect to the budget, I have to tell you, it's just, it's just, to me, it's almost like an impossible task trying to figure these funding streams out, and what we're going to get when, it's just, it's just a crapshoot, and on top of that, the astronomical increase and continued increases with regards to the pension is, is really beginning to take its weight on not only our budget, but on all districts across the state, and, but I, I have to tell you, I really commend the administration, along with the board members that have worked on this budget, to get it to where it is, because that was no small task, trying to, I mean, we started out with two, three million dol- three, three-plus million dollars, that's just, it's just hard to believe. But that being said, I, I think, at least on the surface, we're not there yet for passing this finally, but we have, I think, put forth a very responsible budget for not only our, our taxpayers, but even more specifically for the education of our students and the maintenance of our facilities. So I, you know, I feel, personally, I feel pretty good about what we're presenting so far, and, and there may be some changes, there may not be, but there's, you know, that being said, we're close, and it's, I think, again, I think it's something we all can feel pretty, pretty good about, based on where we started out and where we have gotten to at this point in the process, and it's been no small feat by any stretch.
Mr. Nudie.
I, I think in, in light of having transparency, this preliminary budget, or this proposed final budget, does include a five hundred and twenty thousand dollar tax increase, which is a point, which is approximately point-two mils. And, Mr. Hall, what does that reflect on the average?
The average homeowner?
Yeah.
That would be for the median home, own, home in this community is a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars.
Okay.
Excuse me. That would reflect about a twenty-five dollar increase.
Per year?
Per year.
Okay. I think that's a, a fair shake, considering, I, I think all those homes are going to increase in value more than twenty-five dollars in that year or so. Home values are skyrocketing in North Hills School District.
Yeah, they are.
One thing I do, I, I will point out, and feeds into Ed's comment. The total increase in expenditures in this budget is one point six million dollars. One point two million of that is for the retirement contribution alone. So that means of the rest of the seventy-eight million dollar budget, you had a four hundred thousand dollar increase, which is a fairly nominal percentage increase, less than one-half percent, and that includes adding, I believe, four positions, as well as quite a bit of techno, technology and curriculum improvements.
Yeah, just putting that in perspective, because I hate to talk numbers, but that's true. I mean, we, a million-two increase, just because of pension costs, a million-two, and our total increase was a million-six.
Million-six.
Total increase, so if we didn't have the pension increase, we'd be looking at a six hundred thousand dollar increase with respect to a seventy-some million dollar budget, which is point, point zero one, maybe, but anyway, okay.
And I don't think we want to get too much into the, the weeds on this, but I think the, the fact that we have the planned, we've planned for that pension increase, and that we're continuing to stick to that plan with the fund, and, you know, we have a fund set aside for that, and we continue to work with that plan, I think has really helped this district over the long term, because we haven't, we've been able to smooth out the increases, and, and we're, you know, I think that's really important to continue looking ahead at that, and continue to, to keep planning for this, so that we can keep our other increases low, because we can't do anything about the pension increase on our local level.
Right.
We just have to manage it. So, I know everybody's worked very hard on that, so with that being said-
Oh, Mrs. Bender has a comment before we make a motion.
Oh, are you, yeah, okay, you're gonna go. I just wanted to take from you, Ed, and I believe that we all owe Mr. Hall and our administrators a really big thank you. Having attended the public budget meetings for years and years, it's always, it astonishes me, the ideas, as you said, relative to the monies that we have aside for the pensions, and I know that he works very hard, and I know that our administrators work very hard, too. We, I feel, are fortunate as a board to have you to guide us. I, I really do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so I would like to go ahead and make my motion, then. The superintendent recommends, and I so move, that the board approve the twenty-seven eight, seventeen, twenty-eighteen proposed final budget.
Second.
Is there any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, and as we said, we'll see that back again on June eighth for a final vote. Okay, we have a couple other things to add to the legislative meeting agenda for next week. We have our general fund bills, we have our construction fund bills, capital project fund bills, our budget transfers, a payroll for the month of April. We need to appoint our treasurer for twenty-seventeen eighteen, which we are recommending that Mr. David Hall be again reappointed, reappointed as the treasurer. We have a bid to award for E-rate switches, wireless LAN, and professional services, which is a piece of our technology investment. And there, so there's also an informational item that you have on a grant status report for the current year, twenty sixteen, seventeen, that they want to take a look at. So items three through nine are the ones that we're recommending to add to the legislative meeting agenda for next week.
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Bender. Thank you, Dr. Nolish. I, I will take support services for Mrs. Spade. We are awarding a bid on the agenda here for next week, awarding a bid for the surveillance server software and installation and testing. This is a bid that's being recommended, we award to D'Agostino Electronic Services, the amount of thirty-three thousand, two hundred and twenty-one dollars. That's, this were, this, these bids were advertised and opened on April third, there were six bids, and D'Agostino Electronic Services was the, was the winner of the bids, and of course, they were reviewed by our Director of Technology, and they do fall within the twenty-seven twenty-eighteen school year budget established for this project, so I don't know if anybody else has any questions or thoughts on this? Dr. Nudie.
Mr. Hall, do we have any experience with this particular company?
D'Agostino?
Yes.
They've done most of the technology infrastructure in the district, yes.
Pardon me?
They've done most of the technology infrastructure within the district.
So they're, they're a known quantity?
Yes, very much so.
Thank you.
Kelly?
The only question I have is their known quantity is about half of what everybody else is, and sometimes I'm a little leery when there's such a variance in the, in the bid. Do we have a, and this is probably a loaded question, but have any idea why their bid was so much lower than everybody else's?
Maybe more efficient than the rest.
Sure, that, yeah.
Well, obviously, the biggest item is the video server.
Yeah, yes.
I'll be honest with you, I have, I don't know why their-
Okay, well, well, maybe that's something that we could have our technology folks, uh-
Maybe comment on.
Yeah.
Okay.
Dr. Van Anna, this is one of your projects, too, is, is the, the server was specced? They gave the specifications of the server that all of the members bid on the same specifications?
Yes.
So they know what they're, they know what they're giving us for eighty-seven hundred dollars on that line, but we can definitely look into it, and-
As long as everybody else is satisfied.
Those, those specifications were very specific and clear, so that, particularly because this is the hub of what's gonna run the camera system that we're installing.
Yeah, which is what, really, what prompted my question, because anytime, anytime we're talking about a server, whether it's a video server, or a mail server, whatever, we want to make sure that it isn't something that, that is likely to not function the way we'd like it to be, so I was just curious about that.
Okay, any other questions on that?
No, I, I'm satisfied now.
All right. I make a motion that we add item number one to support services on the legislative meeting agenda.
Second.
Thank you.
I do think-
Yes, ma'am.
I was gonna say, I think maybe it would be helpful next week before we vote, though, to have maybe a little bit more information about that, that discrepancy in-
I'm not an expert on this, but I think two of those companies, if I remember correctly, I'm hope, I think two of them really don't specialize in this kind of thing, so I'm just assuming the thought was, okay, if you want us to bid, we're gonna make it worth our while, so, but I'm not saying that's-
Just a little more background-
Exactly.
Confirming that would be really helpful, if we could have that.
Absolutely.
Before we close the meeting, are there any additional public comments from our standing-room-only crowd? Okay, that being said, I will make a motion, I'm sorry.
One board member comment.
Oh, please.
I just wanted to quickly congratulate our seniors in the music program. Tonight is the orchestra concert, the farewell concert, there's farewell concert for band, I believe, next Wednesday, and for the wind bands, and I think there's a jazz band farewell concert later on in the month, so I just want to say congratulations to all of those seniors and their families, and some of us, I know, are gonna go down and take, listen to the orchestra concert tonight, so job well done, and we're looking forward to one more performance for you before you cross the graduation stage.
Joe, did you have something, or you?
No, I was just trying.
All right. That being said, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
So move.
I can.
Need to adjourn, thank you.